We'll call it order tonight's committee of the whole for the November the second Auburn City Council meeting. The city council should have the minutes from October 19th. Committee of the whole meeting, there are additions or corrections to those minutes. If not, is there a move to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second all in favor. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Our annual report from our outstanding Auburn Municipal Court Judge Jim McGoughman.
Second.
Always a pleasure to be here. I'm a little uncomfortable because I'm used to sitting up there looking at people out here. I now know how they feel.
Guilty.
Definitely. Of what we're still going to have to decide. Last year was a little bit of an anomaly, certainly with COVID. You have all these numbers in front of you. I'm not going to take too much of your time tonight. Just want to highlight a few things.
Hold on just a second. The screen's linked out. There we go. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Ready? Physical year 2021, we handled a grand total of 19,116 cases. That was almost a 50% increase from the year before with COVID. I won't say we're back to business as usual, but we're getting there slowly but surely. We had a grand total of 18,000 cases disposed, which is again, a market increase from the year before, and a total of 16 appeals. Pretty proud of that number. That means less than one one thousandth of the people that we dealt with felt like I did such a bad job, they had to take it over to the county. And of those, probably five of them are people that just really didn't want to go to jail. I ordered them to complete a probably a six month jail sentence. They kind of put the inevitable off. They're going to go home and sit on a little while and have an appeal time, but they're eventually going to go to jail. But we also handled almost 13,000 parking tickets. One of the ways we try and help the community is if they don't have the ability to pay their fines and court costs, we give them the opportunity to do community service at $10 an hour. One of our programs that I've reinstated from Judge Bailey's prior days is a partnership with environmental services where we send a trash truck out almost six days a week now to help keep the Auburn city roads and streets clean. Last year, we had 8,700 hours completed with environmental services to that end. That's almost four full-time employees if you factor that out over the course of a year. We also had an additional 1,540 hours with environmental services that were done just to pay off fines and court costs. That's another $15,000 worth of fines and court costs that got paid off through sweat equity. In addition, we had 2,000 hours at charities around the southeast. In the past, most of that community service work would have been done here in town for our diversion program. And in most purposes, we try and get it done through environmental services because it helps the city more. But with the students being gone for COVID and some of them not coming back and distance learning, a lot of that was done elsewhere. It still benefited a community, just not necessarily our community. COVID-19, when we first started that in 2020, we moved from having court one and a half days a week to three days a week. The purpose was to social distance and reduce the number of people in our courtroom. From pre-COVID, we'd have 300 and 400 people on a docket and anywhere from 150 to 250 would show up. When we started our new procedures, we moved it to 40 citizens an hour and had a docket every hour. So the most we'd have any one morning was 120. Unfortunately, we got to where if we had 40 people sat on a docket, you would have anywhere from eight to 10 show up. So we were having a massive amount of no-shows and having to issue a lot of failure to appear warrants. As you can see, the rate of failure to appear has increased from 2,400 to almost 4,000 in a year. And the problem with that is it increases paperwork for my people. We have to send them second notices as a courtesy to come to court. When they don't do that, we have to issue a writ for their arrest. And then that makes, I was going to say chief register, but it makes public safety director registers' job more difficult because the police have to go out and find all these people and lock them up. And it just makes it very difficult to get the daily business of running the court done. One of the ways we're trying to combat that is our biggest initiative for next year. There's a, I'm sure everybody knows who the Southern Poverty Law Center is, but we work with them hand in hand to the extent we can to try and make sure that we treat our citizens fairly, give everybody a fair shot. They have worked with a computer company to develop a thing called UpTrust. And what that does is it will hopefully, if our IT department can help me get them in line, it will partner with our current system to allow us to send out text message reminders about court dates, payment plan reminders, trial notices, anything like that. So in theory, what it allows to do is it allows us to reach more people, allows to remind them, everybody's got a cellphone. It'll allow us to remind them, come to court, don't forget you owe how many ever dollars this month. And we're hoping that'll not only help us reduce our paperwork and the police's newfound job of having to lock everybody up for not coming to court, but it'll benefit the citizens because a majority of them don't intentionally not come to court. A lot of these college kids just have way too much more fun things going on than paying a speeding ticket or a parking ticket. And they just don't think about it until somebody knocks their door at six in the morning in a pair of handcuffs, and that's too late. But I promised Megan I was going to go 15 minutes, so I'm probably going to start talking about my childhood now unless y'all have some questions I would like to ask. Anything?
Well, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
On this text message, and I know you say everybody has cell phones, so are they allow, I mean, is there somewhere where, you know, people change cellphone numbers so much? And I'm a witness to that. I mean, I don't, but a lot of people do. So do they have to update their phone numbers? Is it?
Theoretically, the, and again, we've been trying to get this installed since January, and we're having difficulty, not with our guys, they're doing great, but with the outside computer company getting it set up to mesh with our system. But the first step we're going to have to do is we're going to have to get the officers, when they arrest people, to collect cellphone numbers. We'll certainly do that when they come to court on their first court date, but it's easier if we get it from the start. When they lock them up, we get all that, we're writing a citation if we get their cellphone number then. Right now, the difficulty we have is college kids, I lived in the same place for four years, and these college kids move every six weeks, it seems like. So they're supposed to update their addresses with us, and they don't do that. I imagine it'll be the same with phone numbers, but in my experience, phone numbers are a little bit more permanent than these kids' living arrangements. So while we will lose some to new cell phones and new numbers, I think we'll still do a better job of retaining them and being able to track them down with a cellphone.
And I understand that with the college students, but I was just talking about the public in general.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh huh. So, you know, and I know that, you know, sometimes you have a court date, and then maybe six weeks later, and somebody changed their phone number before and don't get the text message. So are you going to remind them when this set up, when they come to court, that they must have something in place to
Yes, ma'am.
make sure that if they change numbers, they need to notify the court that their numbers have changed?
Yes, ma'am. And again, the problem is dealing with humans. And we remind them every time they come to court and sign a payment plan that if they move, they've got to tell us, if you don't make payments, you got to come to court. And then all I hear after that is, oh, I didn't know. And, you know, it's right there signed in writing. So we're certainly going to do our best to, it doesn't benefit me or the city in any form or fashion to have folks miss court because we have victims that take time off from work and come sit in court waiting on their case to be heard, and then the people don't show up. And I have to explain to them that, you know, as a courtesy, we're going to give these folks a second chance to come to court. So we don't benefit at all by people not showing up. And so we're going to do everything we can to make sure we get people in the pews.
Judge, they're notified by mail also, even though it's not
Yes, ma'am. If you get a citation in the city of Auburn, you get a court date before you drive off. If you get arrested, you get a court date at the jail. When you come to court, we print out a new court date if your case gets continued. We give you a new court date then. If you don't show up, we mail you a courtesy new court date, which a lot of courts don't do because it is a hassle and a paperwork nightmare. If you don't show up a second time, then we issue a writ for your arrest. But we paper folks to death. We do everything we can to try and get them to come take care of the problem because frankly, it's a lot cheaper on everybody if they come to court and they don't pick up $300 in failure to appear fees and have to then pay that. And it's just a lot easier if everybody handles their business.
Judge, do you see the numbers, the FTA numbers improving with COVID restrictions and everybody coming back to campus?
I can't tell you, Councilman. I hope so, but the problem is, and y'all probably know this as well as anybody, COVID is now everybody's go-to excuse slash reason. I have folks tell me, y'all ask them, why didn't you pay your fines? Judge COVID. Well, these fines are six years old. COVID's not that old. And then it's something else. So I'm afraid that a lot of people have now got it ingrained in their system that if I don't go to court, I'll just tell them I was afraid of COVID. It doesn't stop them from getting in fights and clubs and going wherever else they want to do and getting in trouble, but apparently our court system is more prone to COVID than everywhere else, if you believe some of the public. But I hope that's the plan, is that we'll get the system better and get more people in and take care of things.
Resource wise, I know we've got a pretty good population growth, or we have in the last 10 years. I mean, you fill the courts, I mean, we've got a new building and everything, but resource wise, you've got enough to handle population growth as cases increase.
Well, we could always use a raise.
Yeah.
No, we have had a retirement and another magistrate leave in the last six months. We've replaced them. I think that we have done everything we can to leverage technology to make it where we don't need as many bodies as some of the municipal courts around the state have. We're probably a third of the size of employees that Tuscaloosa employs. As the population continues to grow, we're going to have some additional needs. But right now, I think we've done a good job of leveraging technology, that we've got everything we need. We're, I envision the next five years, I'll be in court four days a week instead of three. But that's all going to depend on how the COVID shakes out and when folks start coming back to court in droves or not.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else?
You have questions for the judge?
Yes, sir. You said working with UpTrust. Tell me a little bit more about UpTrust.
UpTrust is a, as I understand it, just a group of people who have created this software program. And it is at its core, just a text message reminder system. And they have gotten in touch with the Southern Poverty Law Center because again, Southern Poverty Law Center wants everybody to get as much access to the courts and as much of a helping hand in the court systems they can. So this group is, they're currently in, I don't want to lie to you, but I know they're in Montgomery. I think they're in the Hoover Court system, and they may be in Pelham. But everything I've heard about them is wonderful. They seem to get good responses. They seem to get, you know, a good number of people to actually come to court that day instead of having to lock them up. And our issue isn't with UpTrust. It's our other computer provider that does our daily case management software. We can't get them to set a time with Greg and our guys to just install the update. And I'm diligently working on that. I've got another phone call in the morning to choose somebody out. I'll see if that works or not. But UpTrust is just a bunch of guys and girls that have thought this was a good way to try and help courts get people in court.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anything else? Thank you, Judge. Appreciate you and your staff and everything y'all do.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate the opportunity and service that you've offered. Thank you very much.
Any questions on tonight's agenda for the city manager? Ms. Crouch, anything for us?
Yes, sir.
Is there a move to adjourn the committee of the whole?
So moved.
All right, we are adjourned. We'll get started right at seven o'clock. We'll call it order tonight's Auburn City Council meeting for November the second, 2021. The roll call, Lindsay.
Dawson.
Here.
Dixon.
Here.
Griswold.
Here.
Hovey.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Smith.
Present.
Taylor.
Here.
Whitten. Anders.
Here. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance, and then please remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, it's the first meeting of the month, so we'll begin now with our employee of the month and our service awards video.
I'm Mayor Ron Anders, and we're proud to introduce you to our November Employee of the Month and many other outstanding employees here at the city of Auburn. Today, I'm proud to introduce you to our November Auburn City Employee of the Month. I have a memorandum here from Allison Fraser, the Engineering Services Director, written to Megan McGowan Crouch, the city manager. I am pleased to nominate Dan Crowdis for recognition as the employee of the month for November. Dan was hired in 2006 as the city's engineer for development to coordinate the city's development review operations. Soon after coming on board, Dan led the way in creating the development review team. The DRT was established to streamline the process of reviewing site development and subdivision construction plans. The process requires coordination between seven departments working with developers and engineers to ensure that development throughout the city meets the high expectations of our citizens. Since 2006, Dan and his team have processed over 920 DRT cases. As the case numbers grow, the need for more efficient means of review has become evident. Dan worked diligently with the IT department on implementing city works for developmental supplemental tracking, and most recently, working with own-based software to meet the ever-growing needs of planned review and tracking. Other responsibilities of the position include addressing various drainage issues or traffic issues that are not necessarily associated with new development. Dan is a valuable and dependable employee and is highly deserving of recognition. I have witnessed Dan working after hours and on his own time during the weekend to get essential information out to the development community on time. It is for these reasons and many others that I'm proud to recommend Dan Crowdis as the employee of the month. Congratulations.
congratulations to Dan Crowdis for being our employee of the month. Under mayor's announcements, I just want to quickly go through a couple of things. I just want to thank our, all of our great staff, from public works to public safety to our police and certainly environmental services, to have a weekend of a big high school game and a big Auburn University game, and then have trick or treat following that up. And I thought our community showed, was a shining light, and things were great. I was downtown on Saturday and on Sunday night, and it looked spectacular, and people were having a great time. And so I just appreciate everybody's efforts to get through all those events and make all that special for all of our visitors and our children that participated in all the things that we had going on this past weekend. We had a very exciting opportunity to welcome a new police dog to the city of Auburn on Friday. And we want to thank Charter Communications and the Hudson Foundation for their support in bringing us Spectrum. And there was a nice article about Spectrum in today's paper, and we're thankful for their gift to our police, and we look forward to Spectrum helping keep us safe in the future. Also, last week, had an opportunity to be a part of the SGA for a morning with mokas with the mayor, and we had a great breakfast at the new dining hall, and then spent some time over in the student center. And it was a lot of fun getting to engage with many of our students here at Auburn University, and of course, all being, I just appreciate the SGA being willing to put that kind of event on, and for us be able to develop these relationships between us here at the city and our students, and as they spend time here at Auburn as they go to school. It was a very worthwhile endeavor. Last week, as many of you saw, we had the groundbreaking for Buc-E's, very excited about that. We had a great crowd out there at exit 50, and we look forward to Buc-E's beginning their development, and they're building their construction here soon, and to be open hopefully this time next year. It's a very exciting opportunity for our city. Couple Sundays ago, I was at Chawaka with a Down Syndrome Walk, a great group of parents and volunteers out there, really cheering the families that have children or have people within their family with Down Syndrome. There was a lot of support and happiness out there, and I just appreciate everybody's willingness to be a part of that. Also, Mayor Fuller and I, we're at the Walmart Distribution Center recently, as we celebrated 20 million pounds of food that were given over the last 20 years to the Food Bank of East Alabama. And what great leadership the Food Bank of East Alabama has had over the last, during their time here. The Food Bank of East Alabama originally started in the same building that today houses City Hall in downtown Auburn, and now has a beautiful facility in our industrial park that our city, our IDB, had a lot to do with making it happen. They've got a great board of directors, but we're very thankful to Walmart and their willingness to give that food to the food bank over the years and provide that for all the families in need in our community. So those are my mayor's announcements. Anything from anybody else on the council? Want to make an announcement tonight? Yes, sir.
Yes, I have two announcements, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Yep.
We'll have a Ward Two meeting on the eighth of November at 6:30, and it'll be in the James Bustin Training Facility in the building next door, the old public safety building. And that'll start at 6:30 on November 8th, Monday. The main topic will be a presentation by some developers about a potential development in the Mrs. James Road vicinity, known as Old Sanford. So it's going to be, it's quite a, quite a project, and I want to get public input as to just fill everybody out on that, because nothing's been approved yet, but I'd like to go ahead and get input from the, from the public. The other one is that the cumulative legal expenses for the Councilman Dixon versus City of Auburn case, as of 30 September 21, is $32,109.16. October billings will be received this week, and will be updated for the 16 November council meeting. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else on the council have an announcement they'd like to make tonight? Bob?
Yes. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Tomorrow night, Ward Six, Ward meeting will be at the James Bustin Meeting Room, 161 North Ross, 6:30. City Manager Crouch will be joining us, and I hope to see any interested citizens. It's not just confined to Ward Six. It can be anybody in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Anyone else?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to thank Mr. Davis, Al Davis, for opening up the Boykin Community Auditorium on Sunday night for the festival for the children in, well, it was for the community. So we had, also had a great turnout. And it wasn't to separate the thing from Auburn and the community. It's just that I know that a lot of the parents don't take their children out for trick or treating and stuff. So I made it accessible for kids who was in walking distance to be able to come and enjoy a nice festival. And so we had a great turnout, and I just want to thank Mr. Davis for helping with the cleanup.
That's good. Thank you, Connie. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move ahead to Auburn University Communications.
Hi, everyone. Sorry, I hope y'all are doing well. We are quickly approaching the end of the semester, which is just crazy to me. I feel like we all just got here again. But we have a lot of stuff coming up. So first off, the Beat Bama Food Drive is going to be going through November 14th. Y'all might have seen that. I saw it at Kroger last night, just big bins where you can put food in them. We have a lot of students working really hard on this. We're competing against the University of Alabama to help fight food insecurity and poverty in East Alabama. So anything we can do to beat Bama, we really want to do. So we're working hard on that. We've also ordered a lot of promotional materials to kind of encourage students to use that LIFT program that I was talking about last time. Again, safety is a huge priority of Auburn, and we really want to make sure they're taking advantage of this opportunity because it's such a great deal. Who doesn't want to save money, especially in college? And then in SGA, we're working on a lot of things. Better Relations Day is coming up, and I'll kind of touch on this more when it gets closer, but it's December but it's December 2nd, and UGA and University of Alabama SGA Student Government, they're coming here, which, to be frank, the only reason they're coming here is because they can't communicate with each other. Auburn is the mediator. Um, we are the loveliest village, so we mediate. So we're really excited to have them come. Um, since we all do represent the SEC, we all represent the South, we wanna do everything we can to make sure our schools, um, are the best in the country. So we're excited to host them here at Auburn. Um, and then my branch, External Affairs, our civic engagement team is working on getting a polling location here at Auburn. A few other schools have them, Georgia Tech, Alabama A&amp;M, not a lot, so Auburn would be on the forefront of that, which is great, um, to get faculty and staff and students a place to vote on campus. Um, so we're looking into that, we're on just the beginning stages of that, but that's a huge thing we're working on. Um, and then lastly, Mokas with the mayor was so much fun, we had such a great turnout. We were talking about that last night at, um, our Cabinet and Senate meetings, but thank you so much for coming, and thank you so much for coming to breakfast, um, and we would love to do something next semester with you, so we'll touch on that more at our breakfasts, but thank you so much, and where are you going?
Good, thank you. Thank y'all for your hard work. Now's an opportunity for citizens' communications on items on tonight's agenda. Please remember, this is only items on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to speak to the council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. Thank you, Mr. Griswold. Certainly during the committee of the whole, we had an update from the, uh, Auburn Municipal Court Judge McLaughlin. It was an outstanding update, and we were thankful for that. Thanks for the great work that they do. So, thank you. I skipped through that. All right, anyone like to speak to the council on items on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing no one, we'll move ahead. City manager?
Good evening. Under city manager's communications, we have the announcement of two vacancies on the Cemetery Advisory Board. The three-year terms begin January 1st, 2022, and end December 31st, 2025. The appointments will be made at the December 7th, 2021 meeting. Our first item of business is the consent agenda. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the agenda and deal with that item individually?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and city manager. I would like to remove 8D1, 8 Delta 1, and 8D2. So 8 Delta 2, please.
Anyone else like to remove an item from tonight's consent agenda? Okay, Ms. Crouch? 8D1.
Item 8D1 authorizes the execution of a development agreement with Edgar Houston Builder Incorporated for the landings at Academy Drive. As part of the development agreement, the city would commit up to $192,631 toward the installation of bike lanes and a multi-use path to access a future greenway.
Move for approval.
Second.
All right, have a motion in a second. Mr. Griswold?
Thank you. I'd like to, to thank Development Services for consideration of this and for adding a, uh, bikeway, greenway infrastructure to this project. Uh, but I'd like also, um, to have an explanation about what it is we're spending. It's $52,000. I think anytime that the city is providing funding to a developer, uh, we ought to probably bring it up in public and, uh, get a good explanation of it. And in fact, I think most development agreements, uh, in general should not be on the consent agenda. But if you please, uh, go through this, um, development agreement and explain it to the public, please.
I will. I'll have Scott Cummings, our Executive Director of Development Services. He negotiates all development agreements for the city, walk you through the city commitment piece. I do wanna say, as it's shown on your agenda, that the contributions toward this, you know, which total about $192,000, were not originally budgeted, as we cannot foresee sometimes what's coming with development agreements. What we plan to do in the next biennial budget is, is get a lump sum line item in there that helps us when we contribute to things. It doesn't mean that you won't approve the development agreements, council always would, and you would approve the budget, but we also are seeing more and more of this where we get a chance to participate. So we'll, we'll talk about that in the late spring, early summer, but, Mr. Cummings, please go ahead and-
Okay, thank you. So in, in general, as, as we were looking at this development, the, um, saw an opportunity to, you know, extend some infrastructure that was already in place, such as the bikeway, in order to keep that, um, moving. So I applaud the efforts of Engineering Services and recognizing that connectivity needed in order to extend the bikeways, as well as, uh, connectivity for future greenways, as we saw through this development. The development did not require that these be built, so, um, it was engineering, the city engineer's recommendation that, uh, that we contribute to the cost of that in order to, to capture that. Now, it's much less expensive to build things the first time as opposed to going back and, and renovating something in the future. So we feel like we've, um, you know, negotiated a good price. The city engineer, uh, labored over, over the estimates and, and quantities for this and utilizing, um, our database, um, for, um, for unit costs that we have from bids and, and, and other efforts that we do within the city in order to develop these cost estimates. And then these are actually, as, as you can read in development, up to, so the development, the, the developer will have to provide a detailed cost estimate before we, you know, proceed with it and, and finalize the payment for that. So I would ask if Allison Fraser has anything to add to that?
Okay. Again, I, I commend you for the, for the outreach and for the insight to go ahead and add this project in as part of this, uh, development's work. So thank you for that.
And thanks to our engineering team, because they, they recognized it upfront.
I also wanna say that the developer's also been very open, and I think one of the important things is that a lot of developers are willing to work with us. They don't have to do this, and this does save us a good meta, bit of money, um, adding these improvements now. So it's a good partnership, and a lot of times, a development agreement isn't necessitated other than partnerships like this, so we appreciate your indulgence. But, um, when it comes to bikeways and greenways, and we have this opportunity, you will see them, um, as often as possible where it makes sense.
What's the anticipated completion date of this project?
Allison, you may have more information on that. You've been working with the developer. Yeah, thanks?
I'm not exactly sure.
Yeah.
And where, where are the, uh, greenway and where are the improvement? I'm looking at the map, trying to determine where those improvements are gonna be.
Allison, you wanna?
Because you've, you've got some unnamed streets still.
Yeah.
And that's part of the-
Is it gonna be off of Academy Drive? Is that the main?
The bike, the bike lane will extend off Academy, and then the-
To the cul-de-sac there, to the end of?
Yes.
It will. So we'll pick up the bike lanes coming, uh, east-west on Academy. The greenway will go on the north-south cul-de-sac that you see. Um, and these will eventually tie, hopefully, over to Shelton Mill Road with future development.
With Academy, Academy eventually connecting to Shelton?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, got a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, then the next one, Ms. Crouch?
Item 8D2 authorizes a contract with REV Construction Incorporated for the Highway 14 force main replacement project in the amount of $912,033.10.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Mr. Griswold, again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yes, my only question is, what level of disruption of services will be to residents along Highway 14?
So I have Matt Dunn here. He is our Assistant Water Resource Management Director, and I'll have him explain a little bit more.
Uh, it, it's a force main, it's not a gravity line, so there are no services connected into that main, so it will be strictly just a replacement of a, of a force main. So other than just, and we're gonna be on the south side of the, of the railroad along Highway 14, um, so we, we will not be in the road or in any areas disrupting traffic, so.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we have a motion in a second. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Under ordinances this evening, item 9A1 establishes a school zone and authorizes the installation of school speed limit sign assemblies along Drake Avenue in the vicinity of Auburn Montessori School located at 230, 231 East Drake Avenue. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
All right, have a motion in a second. See anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? All right, any discussion or questions? Here none. Roll call, Lindsay?
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Hovey?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Anders?
Yes.
Item 9A2 establishes a school zone and authorizes the installation of school speed